Okay, it is 10:40 and we are back in session. And we are going to go back in the proper order of the agenda. So now we will be going under budget five E fiscal year 2019 strategic plan.
Six.
Six, six E, six E.
We solicited.
Are we missing our city clerk?
Oh, yes, we are. Thank you for noticing. Okay.
Doesn't, nothing happens officially without a city clerk.
We will be waiting. We gotta make sure the recording is on. Are we live? You are, okay, we're live. All right, six E fiscal year 2019 strategic plan. Go ahead.
Okay, each year we put together some revisions to our strategic plan, especially the action items. And they go hand in hand with our budget process and adoption of the budget. We received this year a number of suggestions from the community, more so this year than in previous years. And we have to try and go through all of the suggestions to see which ones seem to be the most practical, feasible. We can't do everything all at once. The strategic plan action items are those that can be accomplished over the next couple of years. The strategic plan vision and goals and objectives, they're more long-term. But the action items that can be done within a one, two, or three-year timeframe. So this is a very huge list. And we need to go through them item by item to see which ones you feel should be incorporated into our plan. Some of them are just word changes that are more grammatical than they are fiscal. So I'd like to just start going right down the list to see which ones we may want to pursue. And then today, we're not asking you to approve anything because we'll bring it back to you on the 17th. So you can adopt a strategic plan for next fiscal year. And we will then undertake all the action items. And that's how you evaluate our performance. And that's how the community evaluates our performance. So the first one is a program we used to do. And that discontinued way back when we had the economic downturn. A citywide tree canopy survey and a shade tree plant.
Before you start, are you gonna just go that way? Or are you gonna go through the document that was attached?
I can do the document if you want.
Well, I've got notes attached and.
So you would prefer the document?
I can do either. I can do either.
I'm gonna have to try to find, go through here and find what I.
That would be under quality of life.
Yeah, it's gonna be really, it's gonna be much more difficult for, to. But if you want.
I'll do either. What is your pleasure? I have it.
I don't have the document with me, so that doesn't matter to me. I've got notes written on pages of the document.
So do you wanna do the document?
I think if we could go through the document.
Let's do the document.
Because it's within the context of each of these.
That's fine, that's good.
Okay, so the first, the items that I'm gonna bring out are in italics.
Right.
So I'm just going to go through them page by page. If you go to page four, at the bottom of page four. The suggestion was make the strategic plan more concrete and actionable with finite timelines and the addition of a tactical plan to support the execution of the strategic plan. We have timelines in there. We have costs where they are appropriate. From a staff standpoint, I don't want us spending all of our time coming up with perk charts and tacticals. And I'd rather just accomplish things. So I don't quite know where that's going, that comment is going.
I think the strategic plan is pretty concrete and actionable. Those, those are addressed and we have the action register. I mean, a lot of our stuff tends to be open-ended. I mean, that's the way government kind of runs, not that we like that part of it. But it takes time sometimes to get things done. So to put finite timelines together, that's just really, we could do that. But then I think it would maybe have a negative if we're not meeting our timelines. It's not because of.
Well, we have the action register that has time.
Yes, that has timelines.
There are timeframes on some of these action items.
Yes, there are.
And so I think that, I understand what this person, whoever made this contribution. But I, I think we do provide that information. So I think this.
Take it out.
Yep.
Believe me, they'll get harder as we go along. On page six, under goal. And again, these are more long-term. Assure financial sustainability coupled with long-term economic growth. It's fine, I mean, I don't.
It actually is somewhat stated in our vision document. So it is, I don't disagree with it, but it actually, we covered that, I believe, in our vision. We have Pana Gorda will be an economically sustainable four-season community.
Yeah, it's a different way of saying it.
So it's already in our document.
It's already there.
Okay. Focus economic development. Should, instead of round, it should be around a city center concept coupled with vibrant north-south and east-west economic corridors.
I mean, we have a city center zoning, focus economic development around.
I guess we deal with our relationship with the county to the north and to the east. I assume that's what that refers to in terms of we needing to benefit from developments elsewhere as well. Just, you know, it's kinda like the Babcock Ranch. When they're building there, we wanna make sure that Pana Gorda somehow is able to benefit, if people can benefit from developments out there or Sunseeker or Murdock Village or that kind of thing. I think it's probably okay.
Do you wanna tweak it a little bit to be more defined as like the vibrant north-south and east-west economic corridors?
In the county?
In, of Charlotte County? Okay. That, that's.
Are we okay with that?
Yep.
We already have in here like high, high priority economic development projects. So are we ensuring the competitiveness of our business climate? Are we, do we already have some of these things wrapped up in some of the other goals? Or is this goal?
Well, this, this keeps us from viewing ourselves from sprawl.
Well, yeah, it does go with the support Charlotte County efforts.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we see, you're right, support Charlotte County efforts. So again, is that redundant?
That is a little bit redundant.
Yeah.
Your pleasure, take it out.
Take it out, it's already stated in there.
Staying on this page, this is under action items now. Prioritize expenditures to eliminate reliance on reserves. Well, the whole budget process, we prioritize the level of service. And when we finish up, we have over the last number of years designated a certain amount of reserves to balance next year's budget. We never have used all of those reserves. We may use a portion of them.
Was this all one comment?
No, these are different ones.
Okay, so that's the first part of it.
They're different ones.
Okay.
Howard, I think there may be some confusion in the general population that even though we use reserves, that doesn't mean that our available reserves isn't inching up each year. Now, I'm on record saying I would like to see it go faster. And I'm not gonna change that attitude. But it's not that we're depleting the reserves. We are, it's still inching up. It's just that it has been a while since Charlie and we haven't, or 2008, we haven't recovered since then. But we are building our city operating reserve up a little bit every year and have been for quite some time.
We are, we have a policy of going up at least a half a percent.
Yeah, we have a policy. So do we need it as an action item if we already have a policy?
If it's a policy, then I don't know that I would need to include it. That would be my take, we would not need to include it here.
As long as it's someplace where it's documented that that is a policy.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, that was the point I'm making. I just think that, like I said, that sometimes there's confusion. Well, we're using reserves and you kind of, well, the piggy bank is always getting smaller. Well, it's not, it's just, it's always getting bigger unless, God forbid, we have another 2008. It'll go the other way.
So take, take that sentence out. Okay, next one.
Maybe up top in, in the goals, you could specify that we do have policies. Like you have continued best management practices and financial planning, which would kind of go with our policy review. Every year, we review that policy as part of the budget.
Maybe we can get some wording up.
Get some wording up there in the goals because we really do do that.
Cut programs that should be homeowners' responsibility, swales, et cetera. Here we go.
I'm behaving. I am gonna behave. I'm on record.
I had quite a discussion with some residents about this. And they really think that if we are going to have tight budget situations that we need to perhaps make residents responsible for the maintenance of their properties.
I've heard that from several too. So maybe what we could do with that specific program is look at it, stand on its own and maybe over time, instead of in perpetuity diminish it over time based on what contract we have now.
I will say this, for the number of years that we've been here, the number of complaints about swales and drainage since we started this program have diminished.
Right.
Because people see a program, they know eventually we're gonna get to various areas, just like our road paving. And it's become kind of quiet.
I, I get that. And I, I understand exactly what you mean. However, when you talk to a group of residents and you say, we've spent a million dollars in the last two years addressing swale issues.
Roughly, yeah.
And, and they see, even though we have not raised our mileage rate, their taxes have gone up.
Yes.
And so they see, and if we are going to, if we're faced with making tough decisions, then a tough decision is gonna be coming up with a program, you know, to address this and put the onus back on the responsibility on the resident. If it's something, if somebody has to maintain their, you know, their lawn and, and, you know, not have thatch or, you know, this is one of those things where they're saying, if we choose then to raise the taxes in order to accommodate something, they'd rather see us eliminate this and go back to making people responsible for it. That was the feedback I received.
We've really never made, I mean, how did we make them responsible for it? We had issues.
We haven't.
Yeah, we haven't. So how would we go back to that if we haven't done it?
Well, before it's, we, the program was so minimal initially.
It was, very minimal.
Very minimal. And so it was just feedback I got.
Gary?
I'm just saying philosophically, do all neighborhoods have a swale problem? Question.
Throughout the city?
Yes.
Some more than others.
Some, do all neighbors, neighborhoods have a swale problem?
Eventually, they will, yes.
The guttered neighborhoods have a swell problem?
Guttered neighborhoods, oh, you mean like downtown?
Yeah.
There are parts down, there are parts downtown where there are swale issues. Not as many as some other areas.
But not ones that would require cutting would be the, I mean, the type of grass is not the issue like in this case.
No, not the type of grass, but there are swell issues downtown.
I mean, it's one thing when we're dealing with an infrastructure issue. Okay, that's, that's a moral issue that we're obligated to do versus a maintenance issue.
Right.
That's been my point that I've been trying to make. So if you have certain areas that have maintenance issues that aren't, that don't necessarily equate to the other parts of the city, it doesn't seem to me to be fair to have downtown pay for my PGI swale.
And the only reason I bring this up is that prior councils have had to deal with this. And, and they got a lot of complaints.
A lot, yes.
We're still getting them.
Yes.
I just had one, two, two in the last week.
Yeah.
But I'm, but the amount of complaints that city councils used to get.
Oh, I know. I got lots of emails from people and I don't get those anymore.
Right. And we've had people show up to the budget hearings and all of that. And to put the, you know, before it was fixed, the input to the strategic plan was fix the drainage issues.
So it seems to me that the question is, are the five of us willing to take the heat?
Well, I wouldn't eliminate it now. We just hired, I mean, we have a program. I think at some point, we need to decide when the program should end. How about that? Review the, review the drainage program.
Yeah, I agree. Go ahead. My belief is that I think we should address the ones that need it the most right now. And then at some point, we have to make a decision that this program's not gonna continue. The city just can't keep funding that kind of money every year. But we've got, we've got properties that have been on the list for a long time that really desperately need to be fixed. And we know that we should finish at least that segment of it. But at what, at some point, we have to come up with a way to wean ourselves out of it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. I don't know when that will be or at what level we have to cut it off, but.
I will reword it. Action item will be to review the swale program and come up with a game plan, future game plan.
What about reviewing a thatch ordinance? We've talked about it. We have a weed ordinance. Weeds can only be so high, grass can only be so high.
As long as we can provide specific criteria in order to comply with the ordinance, that's something we can certainly do.
We had a tough time with that.
Well, this is another round of education on why we have these problems and how, how we can make it the homeowner's responsibility. I think there's some value in that. I mean, Gary, when, when you had the person come out to de-thatch, did they say, yes, you have a thatch problem? I mean, there was a way to determine.
Well, the way I determined is if I walked into my swale, my, I sunk down about a good six inches. Because the, that type of, well, I forget what you call that grass, but it grows on top of the.
St. Augustine grass.
And actually, I need to do it again, but I'm still draining well, you know. But that's part of the problem. And part of the problem is, is that even the swales that don't have that type of grass, they may get filled in with, with debris over time. And that debris needs to be removed.
I don't hear any support for that. So just review the swell pro, the drainage program.
I have it on here.
Yeah.
Recommend zero-based budget process. Now, that was a, that was kind of a fad in the 90s, especially early 2000s. And what that means is that for next year's budget, we will be providing you, each department will get up here and go over every single line item. And they will justify every single line item. And if you're ready to do that, we can do that. We have shied away from that. And our budget process has been based on programs and levels of service.
Yes.
I think the way we've been doing it is just fine. I think that staff and preparation of the budget and the running of their, their departments have demonstrated consistently that they're prudent in the way they spend their money. And I have, and I don't see that we need to change the process because I think that part of it works well. I think that city staff has shown that they're, like I say, responsible and prudent in the way they're spending the money.
I would like to see more justification for why we need increases over the previous year's spending so that it's as transparent as possible to the residents.
We can expand on that. We can expand on that, but.
I don't know that I'd call it zero-based budgeting, but I think it's really helping people understand.
We can expand on that.
Which I think is one of the reasons why I suggested earlier, we, if we had a spreadsheet that showed these kinds of things, I think the PowerPoint presentations that we have, it's, that's nice, but it oversimplifies. And I think if we had it more of a, in a spreadsheet form that could help us understand.
Can provide you more detail on a line item basis if you want. But a whole zero-based budget process, I'm telling you.
No, I don't wanna go back to zero and build up.
Okay. Consider expediting revision of city center land development regulations regarding single-story buildings separate from revision regarding building height issues. I thought that's why we're doing the master plan.
All that's gonna be fleshed out, fleshed out.
Okay, so get that out of the way. Hold a referendum on building heights and other issues within Charlotte County?
Same.
Take it out. Maintain a flexible master plan moving forward. I don't.
I think we all.
Yeah, and didn't we agree that we were gonna build in a review, like recommend for future city councils to do a five-year review, something that didn't happen?
We did talk about that.
Yes.
That's not an action item.
And we'll get through that at the end, when we get the final report. There's gonna be recommendations on what to do next.
Yeah. Maintain small-town feel of Pana Gorda.
Yes.
Yes.
That's all part of the master plan, isn't it? Okay, take that out. Eliminate impact fees.
Well, and maintaining our small-town feel is also in our plan upfront somewhere. I know we've talked about that.
It's in the vision.
Yeah, it's in the vision.
It's in the vision. Already in the vision.
Then it doesn't need to be here.
Okay.
It's redundant.
Eliminate impact fees.
I just don't think that's doable because the, like the parks, we kept the parks and the roads for a reason. People move here because of the parks and the roads. I mean, growth has to pay for some of the growth. I can't, if not, if we do away with all of the impact fees, then we're 90% residential, our residents are gonna be paying virtually for everything.
We only get a sixth of that out of even what the taxes are, so that doesn't viable.
No.
Okay, take it out. Use in-house staff in lieu of hiring consultants.
I mean, we only have so many staff members.
Yeah, that's where.
We have to go outside for some stuff. And sometimes it makes better sense to do that. It's a case-by-case basis.
When you, when, frequently, when you hire an outside consultant, you're getting somebody that's, that's outside of the forest and is able to see the trees a little bit better because they haven't been living in the forest. It's a, it's a double-edged sword. Sometimes if you're close to it, you get a better perspective, but sometimes you need to be able to step back. And that's where consultants can be advantageous on the appropriate conditions.
I think we already do that on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I do too.
Well, and the other thing is, as hiring the expertise, instead of hire, acquiring the expertise on a, on a case-by-case basis as opposed to hiring someone to do it in-house, adding to our staff level, then we are adding to our overall payroll. And we may not need that expertise on an ongoing basis.
Establish assessments as other communities do?
I mean, we have, right now, we have our canal maintenance and other things. I mean, beyond that, I don't know what we would need assessments for.
I also think assessments is a dirty word in the eyes of a taxpayer.
It is.
Anytime we don't have to do assessments, we shouldn't.
I agree.
I mean, having assessments is one way to make things very transparent as to what you're paying your money for. As somebody pointed out to me, a resident said, but I get a tax deduction, I don't get an assessment deduction. So if, if you lower the mileage rate and put more things below the line in assessments, that could be a disadvantage to people. And I think we do a great job of providing detail in our budget documents. It's, people don't know where they are. So I've pointed it out to numerous people. And the finance does a great job of indexing the documents so you can go and get excruciating detail if you want it.
And the search works pretty well too, if you're looking for something specific.
Okay. Attract small industry related to aviation, textiles, Florida-made products, and technical fields to the new commercial area on Jones Loop Road.
I think that's part of what we do, especially if we.
I mean, that's, and that's, the loop is private.
Yeah.
I mean, do we wanna spend city funds to help?
No, we don't need.
Well, we already say proactively support public private efforts.
Yeah, we support. I'm just worried if we.
Defill that area.
And if we put something in here, then it could, it could be attached to some budget item. And really, I don't think the city should be funding that. But yes, we could do whatever we can to help.
What we should be doing is, I think what we are doing is we're supporting the, the infrastructure to it, whether it's a new forest main, we're supplying water, those types of things within our service area. And we're, we're doing them in a proactive way so that those areas can develop and bring revenues and resources into the city coffers in the future. We're already supporting it just by definition.
And we also. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
We also, and our goal, support the Charlotte County efforts.
Yes.
For economic development, which is, they are our economic development office, so.
Okay.
You wanted to go back to?
I'd like to back up just one thing on the, on the list there with regard to the item that says develop succession plan for city manager position. I would like to suggest that we put the onus of this on Howard. But to start, we know that it's a few years away. I've already had a long conversation with Howard about this. We know it's a few years away, but I would like to see you start compiling a three-ring notebook of the different things you do in your job and the different projects that are ongoing and what the status of each project is so that at some point in the future, you could hand this notebook to your prospective successor and they could sit down for a couple of days and read through it and get up to speed on a lot of the main projects going on. I think that would be a big step forward in doing an ease of transition at the time that it ever happens. I know that we talked about you staying on for a minimum of six months, but I think this would be a big help for someone to come in. There's so many, so many things going on at all times throughout the city that it would be helpful to someone who's coming in to have a concise way to look at all the different things that are happening, different projects that are in different stages, the RO plant, the master plant, whatever it might be. This could be a composite of all the different projects you are currently working on and maybe even go back and, and pull in some of the things that have happened over the past couple of years. But I think it would be something that could be a very useful tool for someone who has to step into that role at some point in the future. And I would like to see that, I'd like to suggest that we do that.
Okay. Put a book together.
I think that's a good point. I think it would be helpful. It's kinda like a journal or a diary.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, so that transition.
Not a job description per se, but, you know, but you're right. Like a journal and a log of the things that are happening and ongoing projects.
With such a document.
Yeah, right, all that's, because you know, we know stuff sitting in these five seats that most of the general public in the community do not know. But there's a lot of useless information stored up in all of our brains for different things. And I just think it would be something that could be very useful.
And with useless information, I'm the king. And the point being is such a document would allow whoever the five people are here at the time that Howard does decide to move on to other pastures, that document will also provide us a better job description and understanding of just what he does on a day-to-day basis.
I'm glad you said. I'm glad you said "other pastures" as opposed to just pasture.
That was intentional on my part.
Well, you've got the horses.
You have your own.
You've got the horses.
Okay, keep going.
Ensure, ensure the Puntagorda Chamber Commerce is the go-to agency for unified business voice of our city. We could do that. Now, remember now, they are a...
We face with them all the time. I mean, we've got the other chambers, too, that aren't members of, they're members in Englewood Chamber, Charlotte County Chamber.
Yes, restricted.
Remember, each chamber is promoting their own membership.
Yeah.
Yes.
But this is our city's chamber.
But we also are all members of the county chamber as well. If anything, our interface would be our communications director, to be honest, from us, from our standpoint as a city, is her.
Maybe we should incorporate that, that the communications manager needs to build better bridges with all of them.
Interface with the Chamber of Commerce.
Good point, Jim.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that would show up, then, under partnerships, communication, collaboration.
Okay, all right.
But I wouldn't, I would say that I don't have a problem with somehow utilizing the Puntagorda Chamber for business input to, you know, I don't...
But our ecosystem, we're not restricted to this little space. I mean, our future also depends on the county as well. I think that that would tie us up in our reason. Because even myself, when I'm like, the last trip I took, I'm looking at a drone company that's based in Beppacock Ranch. I want them to come to Puntagorda, but they're right now in the county. They're not a member of our local chamber, but hopefully they will be. I mean, I just think it would restrict us. There's no reason to, I think if we have her do her job and connect with pretty much all our local ecosystem chambers, then we're doing our best.
Work toward a more normal 75-25 ratio of commercial residential, but not at the cost of growth for growth's sake.
It's kind of editorialized in my mind. I mean, what does that mean?
That goal is already, the 25-75 is already our goal, yeah.
Is it an official goal or is it just have been a consensus goal?
It's a want. It's right down here. Key performance indic, yeah, a key performance indicator. It's a want, not a need.
Okay, take it out. Work to step out of the building business and work harder at annexation through incentives that will not strip up, strip us of needed taxes.
I think we've tried to provide as many incentives as we can without, you know, every time we don't take something in, then the rest of the ratepayers have to absorb it.
I didn't know that we were in the building business.
I don't, I don't know what we're building, but...
And I don't think we have any, we do have one incentive for annexation where we do refund, rebate some of the property tax that they pay for the first two years, but that was, that's taxes we wouldn't have gotten otherwise. So we're really not losing, per se.
Yeah.
And it's all voluntary anyway, so, Carrie?
Biggest problem that we're having in the county, which also equates to us in our service area, is having younger, qualified, experienced, technical people that can perform jobs that businesses would want to come here to hire in the first place. There's a chicken and egg issue here, and that's, that needs to be solved as a county slash city partnership, I think. But that's the issue. I go back to the airport, I had a conversation once. They went a number of months without having HVAC, two, they were short two HVAC guys because they couldn't find anybody to hire. And they had to go $15 from $10 just to get bag handlers because that type of position, that type of workforce is just not available in our county.
One thing with regards to that, like with annexation, I do think that we, in our vision, we need to envision some sort of growth annexation as opposed to only letting people, you know, right now, we're kinda dependent on volunteers. And I think we should have some sort of goal for annexation as well, in terms of our visioning for the city. Just to balance this out, because otherwise, our residents have to carry a load. If we can actually get more commercial on the outskirts, it would balance this out. So our residents will have to have a potential tax raise in the future.
Can we try and reword this? Or take it out?
I would probably take it out.
I would take it out.
I would say that one of the things we may want to consider is, and I don't want John Lisa and to be, Mitchell to be cringing, but, you know, there are people who possibly would annex into the city, but they have their own individual reasons why they don't. And so it may be looking at those individual businesses and doing some kind of grandfathering that would allow those people to continue a practice of some sort. So it would encourage them to annex in.
And I think, too, under our goals, where we have strengthened and diversified the city's tax base to increase the commercial base, you could put something in there about annexation.
Yes.
Strengthen and diversify the city's tax base to increase the commercial base.
Through annexation.
Through annexation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keep it simple.
Yeah.
Yes.
Recruit additional airlines?
Hmm, that's not our job.
Is that, should we be doing now?
That's not our job, and I would hate to see anybody on city council negotiating contracts on the city's behalf.
Your neighborhood would not like you.
Incorporate performance measures that measure employment. We can try and, we can try and do that. I don't know if we have to have an action item, but we can certainly try and add that to our performance indicators. We wanna try and do something.
Well, don't we give, we give merit-based, don't we do some merit-based raises?
No, this is incorporate performance measures that measure employment, employment in the city.
More like the...
Oh, the over, not the city employees. Okay, okay. Do the chambers do anything with that? I mean, they're more...
I think so. I think they do have some kind of...
They should.
Status charts they keep.
Yes.
That is so...
Or maybe the economic development office.
We could include a key performance indicator to track it if we wanted to track it, but I don't know.
We can try and track something. We'll see.
I don't know.
I wouldn't spend a lot of...
I wouldn't.
No, I wouldn't.
Effort at it.
There are so many other factors that influence employment.
Yeah.
It's not just a city of Puntagorda thing. It's...
Okay.
Okay.
Page nine. Goal. Build a robust city infrastructure to exceed the needs of current and expected population, and then ensure, assure it is deployed with the highest quality standards in an always professional manner.
I don't think we already do that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it does sound good.
It sounds great.
It sounds great.
I think our Achilles' heel, that we've only been able to address because we got it on a list, is a key star.
Oh, yeah, expansion.
That particular infrastructure.
Yeah.
It's on the long-range plan for the NPO.
Yeah, so, so if one would recouch, is there a way that we, as a city, could encourage that to be pushed up?
Yes.
That certainly would be something I think that would be admirable and noble on our part.
But we already have a goal that...
Mr. Carroll.
We already have a goal. It says, "Establish long-range plan that ensures infrastructure is in place to meet projected growth demands."
Yes, right above it.
So take it out?
Mm-hmm.
Take it out. Okay. Add sidewalks on West Marion from Chastain to Fisherman's Village.
Don't we already have sidewalks?
No, not in that one area. If you go on West Marion, there's an area there without sidewalks.
Yeah, on the...
We're lacking continuity of sidewalk on, in an, in an area where there should be, then maybe that's something we need to include as...
So we have sidewalks up to a point, and then it stops?
Yeah.
Never noticed.
Oh, yeah, if you go on West Marion.
I just never noticed because I'm always driving, so it'll be there.
Yeah, yeah, it does stop.
It does stop.
So...
That's odd, then. I think we should.
Mm-hmm. I think we should definitely consider it.
I thought you were gonna pull up Google Earth.
Okay, it didn't make this year's budget, but it's on the action register as we start thinking about next year's budget. That's why we have it.
Right.
Okay.
What happened to our...
He's trying to find the map.
He's trying to show the spot. Bargain house. So here's Chastain.
On the southern side of the right, for the record, Mitchell Austin Urban Design, from the, on the southern side of the right-of-way, just west of Shreve Street, the sidewalk ends and does not pick up again until Sculpture Park.
But there is sidewalk on the other side of the street.
Mm-hmm.
So we do have a sidewalk. It's just on the other side of the street.
Not all the way.
Well, in Olympia, it's the same way. We don't have sidewalk on both sides of the street.
Right. On Olympia, same thing. Is that something you wanna look at?
Perhaps what we should consider is putting some type of, oh, I hate to say this, traffic calming device so that one can cross the street to get from one side to the other side of the sidewalk.
How about if I add West Marion and Olympia sidewalk and just, and then we can cost it out and see if it sticks for next year's budget?
Missing links, yeah. Analyze the missing links of sidewalks.
Reevaluate bricking policy due to its high maintenance and costs. I wouldn't use the word "high maintenance" because actually, you put the bricks in and your maintenance costs are quite feasible. It's the initial cost to put them in.
Yes. And I thought we've already committed to...
We have.
Putting the ones back that were taken out.
We have.
But as, I think as, as, you know, Rick Keeney has pointed out to us, it's a long-term, was a hundred-year surface so that it really is a very cost-effective surface.
And the neighborhoods where the bricks are are part of the personality of Putagorda we wanna project.
Absolutely.
And they're also a traffic calming feature.
I mean, we, we look at our road paving every year, and it's in there, so we do evaluate it.
Yeah.
Always on the table to be looked at.
And I think it adds to the acquaintance of that area of the city.
Develop additional parking.
I mean, if the county's willing to build a second garage with the events center, I see, we can encourage that. But we actually have a lot of parking, to be honest.
We don't have any place to put more parking.
I know.
I mean, there's, really isn't. There is...
There's the grass.
Yeah.
I would agree with Ha. I would rather see the utilization of the event center parking lot into...
Because that was, that's in their plans, too. We need to encourage them to do what they said they want to do.
I would encourage that. That I would put in here. We want to encourage.
Yeah, because that lot is already engineered to go multi-car.
Yeah, it's already in their mind.
We will reword it.
Encourage maintenance of harborside structures.
I don't know what they're referring to.
Like harbor walk?
The boat club?
That could be the Bayfront Center and the...
And the boat club, because I know I've had complaints from the neighborhood.
Yeah, I have, too. Just for clarification, while we're talking about that, the YMCA building, the Bayfront Center, the city knows the property there, correct?
Yes.
And the boat club maintains their own?
Yes.
Okay. Because there was a question about that a couple of weeks ago, and...
I think this is too vague.
So they have a similar arrangement that the visual arts center has, because we own that building, too, right?
We don't own the building.
No, we own the land.
Oh, we own the land?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the building's on, okay.
Take this out. This is operation, more operation than anything else. Install safety measures at Bell Harbor and Albatross intersection with metal railings, reflectors, and appropriate shrubbery.
What is the problem there?
I put a question mark, Lynn, since it's in your district.
Didn't come from me. It did not come from me.
No, I just thought maybe you might know, be aware of something that...
The only thing that I know about that intersection is that I've had a few people ask me about putting, crossing, a crosswalk there. And I've met with Mark Gering out there a couple of different times, and we've looked at where the school bus drops off and where the traffic comes to and from. And he suggested that it might be more of a problem and a hindrance than it would be a help, so I didn't pursue it. That's the only thing I know about that intersection. I've never seen that before. I don't, I don't know that...
I don't know that it needs to be in the, can you have the chief, chief go analyze the intersection? I don't, I mean, do we have...
Couple of works can look at it, but I don't.
Do we have crash reports from that area or something that, was there an accident or something?
That's, I was just gonna suggest, do we have any kind of accident record for that intersection?
Not...
You do know?
I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of many.
I'm not either, but I have seen a couple of accidents there, but they're few and far between from what I've seen. Maybe Rick can help.
For the record, Rick Keeney, yes, we can get, we'll go with the police department and get accident reports. We can do that with no problem.
Okay.
If there are any.
And it may be a spot to put up that speed trailer? If there's a problem.
It may be a good place for a controlled police presence for a couple of days because we do have a lot of people, oh, oh, there she comes. We do have people that like to go right through the stop sign and pretend that there isn't one there. We also have a lot of people that like to short-change that corner when they turn onto Albatross, so...
So maybe that's what they mean by the metal railings, so that it's actually putting something so they can't cut the corner and drive over the...
I don't know.
Property?
You know, the, we have a lot of contractors that come out of the bird section that don't stop at that stop sign. They just kind of, if they see that there's no car coming, they just make the turns, like, oh, it wasn't even a yield. I mean, you know.
Yeah, Chief Pam Davis, Puntagorda Police Department. Well, what I'll do is I'll go back and find any data we have, and I'll coordinate it with Rick. And in the meantime, we can put some things up in place there and do some extra enforcement.
Perfect.
I don't see it being as much of a speeding problem as it is just abusing the intersection.
Take it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take it out.
Improve West Henry, West Marion intersection.
West Henry, West Marion.
Yeah, where, where?
We've discussed that there already before.
Where the flashing light is.
Signal light is, not the signal light, the flashing.
The flashing light is on West Henry, so would you head west and you come toward...
We get a lot of complaints about that intersection. I had somebody complain that someone going westbound on Marion did a U-turn at the, at the point of the triangle two weeks ago.
Really?
Yeah, and cut off people.
But maybe a no-U-turn sign or is it two-way?
Well, but there's already the flashing.
But we did, we did improve that.
Yeah, I know, but this just happened two weeks ago.
We've discussed this intersection previously, the council, as we sit here.
Yeah.
And it's, it is problematic and what have you. I don't think that unless there's a unusual number of accidents, because we should address it until, the time to address it would be is when we decide, when we actually have an opportunity to do something with that property, that Henry Street property, whether it's a park or whatever it's gonna be, to address that at that point in time. Because, I mean, we talked about roundabouts or stoplights, and I think we had a discussion about a turn lane, et cetera. I think that it needs to be more holistic because you do have, and maybe visit it after Fisherman's Village finishes their construction to see just really what's gonna happen there, and then address the way to best handle it. I think right now, we could handle it and then just wind up having to tear up what we did anyway.
Yeah, because we did put up the flashing sign, we did improve it, and we did improvements at West Henry and East Olympia. We did that, we took away that second lane there. We've done improvements on those two intersections. Do you know anything specific?
If you go on West Henry, heading towards the aisles, into the aisles, there's the two lanes coming off of West Marion. And so you have to yield to see who's coming.
Yes.
That's the issue.
Mm-hmm.
With this person who submitted the idea.
Yeah.
I would take it out at such times that we actually improve on West Henry property itself. We don't, nothing to do right now, as good as it's gonna be right now.
Okay, we'll just close it, West Henry, and make everybody turn right on to Garvin Street and left on Marion.
All the people on, yeah, oh, there's no houses there, but...
I'm not hearing a lot of-
No. I believe it alone.
I don't know how much more we can do there.
Page eleven. Page eleven. We're under partnerships, communication, collaboration. Use social media, Facebook, Nextdoor, et cetera, for virtual town hall meetings, real-time communication, marketing, calendaring, small business announcements, activities, et cetera.
Doesn't our communications director use that for like in-facing, out-facing, depending on the technology?
Well, we, we do use Facebook.
Mm-hmm.
We have used Nextdoor. We did use it when we had Hurricane Irma. Police use it. We do not do virtual town hall meetings.
Do we have, we don't have the equipment to even do something like that?
We have city health.
I mean, maybe in the future, we could upgrade, because we don't even do live streaming of these meetings. That would be something we would want to do in the future.
We could work towards live streaming on Facebook, the city council meeting.
Yeah, that's a goal.
Yeah, that's good.
That's a goal.
I know the county does that, right?
Mm-hmm.
But we could just incorporate social media, where we have council meetings, customer surveys, and social media. You know, we could just add social media so that it's actually in there.
Yep.
All right, we'll add the phrase "social media" and then talk about what-
In that sentence somewhere.
We're doing.
Yep.
Encourage the city to work even better collaboration with our surrounding government partners to the north, east, and south.
I think, I mean, that's pretty much what this whole section talks about.
Well, Ad United Way of Charlotte County as a partner agency, yeah, we, we should have put them in there. They're, they're not in there.
Okay, get them in there.
Mm-hmm.
So the first one, I don't, wait, no, I'll take that first part out. Encourage council members to visit our state reps in Tallahassee to achieve more state expenditures in the city.
I don't think we do that as part of our natural league of cities actions. I mean, there's a legislative base.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're-
I kind of get the impression we're kind of ahead of the game compared to other communities. We've done quite well.
And, and Jerry will let us know-
Yes.
What involvement we need.
Yep.
Do you want me to leave it in there?
No.
No? Okay. Enhance representation communication between the Punta Gorda Housing Authority and Charlotte County Affordable Housing Advisory Council.
You, you're on the housing authority.
I spoke with Angie, what's her last name? She was at Homes Coalition. Angie?
Matheson?
Matheson?
No, no.
No.
Oh, Angela Hogan?
Yeah, Hogan.
Well, she's now on the Gulf Coast Partnership.
Yeah, I had a good meeting with her last week. She, she was the one who was, I think it's from her comments probably. She put this in because she was just saying that, um-
It is her.
Yeah, that, that, it's, it's more, I guess it's less about us than about Punta Gorda Housing Authority and Charlotte County Affordable Housing Advisory Agency working together. We can help facilitate for them. That was more what she's saying. It's less about our actions, it's more about the two of them working more closely together. Because they don't, they don't sit at the same table, so that's-
So would you like to take that one on then?
Yeah, yes.
So maybe combine it to say facilitate communication and collaboration between the city, the Gulf Coast Partnership, and the Charlotte County Affordable Housing Advisory Council?
Yes, yes.
Facilitate.
Facilitate, yeah.
Use the word facilitate as opposed to enhance.
Right.
Okay. Enhance communication and collaboration between the city and Gulf Coast Partnership.
That was all in that.
Yeah, that was all part of the previous.
You're combining those two things.
Yeah, now that is something we can do.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next page, twelve. Improve communication from the city to businesses and residents alike. Foster city, citizen-city communication through regularly scheduled communications and meetings.
We do that.
We do that.
We do that. In fact, residents even commented to me on this one, that this city communicates more than any other city that they've lived in.
I, I would leave it in there because I think it's an ongoing thing that we should, we should maintain in perpetuity. I think that's something that it's, it's our responsibility as council members to continue reaching out to all of the people in the community. I, I get lots and lots of comments every week when the newsletter goes out that they thank us for being so informative and sharing of so much good information. And people are very involved in this community, so I think that should be ongoing.
Should it be a goal though, instead of an action item? Because then what are we going to say, "Yes, we did it"?